We're going to call our special meeting to order of council for Thursday, April 30. Our first order of business, new counselor business, anyone?
I'd just like to say, wow, what a crowd. Thank you all for coming. It's great.
Thank you. Any, item three, there's no business, new business for today, other than our item four. Four, four one, we have a report number 15068 from the chief financial officer regarding our 2014 draft financial statements. Move to Counselor Schuman, second to Counselor McFadden, discussion. Comments? All in favor? Opposed? Carried. Thank you. Item four two, we have a report number 15067 from the chief administrative officer regarding the Memorial, Kin and Curling Rink. Counselor Wilbur?
I will move the motion that council commit to the renewal of the Memorial Arena, Kin Arena and Curling Rink at an estimated cost of $9,071,716 over six years. Further, that council approve the replacement of the refrigeration system for all three facilities with Freon-based systems, along with priority building envelope, site and drainage works to be completed in the 2015 at an estimated total of $2.4 million. And finally, that the 2015 work be funded through the deferral of non-urgent capital projects in the 2015 financial plan and reallocation of other funds as detailed in the financial section above.
Second to Counselor Schuman. Discussion. So first, I guess I'm going to, and if I, counsel's will, I want to, if I can, the, obviously, the passion, the attention, the importance of this subject for our community as we've been dealing with it over the last number of months. And so, for the benefit of the folks that are watching on our video link, as well as the folks that are here in person, I want to go through the number of steps that council and administration we've taken over the last number of months and the report that is referred to in the agenda, to give folks a sense of the work that has been undertaken, to develop the information to help us guide us through this process of understanding the issues, the components, and how we are hoping to move it forward. When the ammonia leaks came to light this past winter, and ammonia, obviously, being a, creates a public hazard, immediately, in those facilities, we were required to close them down, and we began the investigative process in terms of trying to determine the damages, what was causing it, where it was, and then the components around that in terms of ensuring that we had the appropriate and adequate information to understand, hopefully guiding us forward. One of those is, obviously, in our community, in terms of a growing community, is understanding what's happening with the demands of facility use in our community and trying to get a handle on the impacts of both ice facilities, ice use, as well as dry floor space. And so, we did conduct, as part of this process, an indoor recreation needs assessment of facility plan that gave us some information in terms of understanding what's happening within the community as it relates to the demands of those facilities, both the arenas and the curling rink. Part of the, part of the components around making the decision was if you're going to make a decision that you're either going to repair or replace or whatever, you really need, we felt anyways, to understand what's the condition of the overall buildings in terms of those envelopes, the Kin Arena, the Memorial Arena and the Curling Rink. Because we, absolutely, if you're faced with a estimate of three or four million dollars to replace potentially the chiller, the compressor and/or the pads, if it was leaking in there, we didn't want to be in a position where we commit to that and find out you have some structural issues or roof, or significant things that all of a sudden you got faced with another five or six or seven million dollars. So we engaged force engineering group locally to do those building condition assessments. Those building conditions assessments for, first of all, and I'm going to talk about, and I'll go through them each individually, the Kin Arena, the structural elements, including walls, are all satisfactory. Structural foundation is satisfactory. The structure floors, interior walls, roof, doors, windows, exterior walls and exterior doors are serviceable. The Memorial Arena, the superstructure elements include walls are all satisfactory. Structural elements, including walls, are all satisfactory. Entrances, doors, windows and roof, all other components, including exterior walls, thermal interiors are serviceable. The Curling Rink, superstructure, including walls, are all satisfactory. Structural foundation and floors are satisfactory. All other components, including entrances, exterior walls, thermal doors, windows, roof and interiors are satisfactory. As a result of that, it gave us the confidence that we got 20 or 30 years left of serviceable life within those facilities. So if you make an investment, you understand then that you've got some structural integrity that exists within the facilities to ensure that you're not going to be faced with something significant behind that. Next up, we engaged was BST Consultings, which looked at the concrete floor and header pipe assessments. In the Curling Rink, the Curling Rink Ice Lab is 26 years old and has accelerated aging and is failing. It continues to be serviceable, but it's reaching its end of life. The Memorial Arena, this Memorial Arena Ice Lab was cast in the late 70s, is now 37 years old. The slab has reached its end of its expected and intended life cycle. The Kin Arena, the Kin Arena Ice Lab was built in 1986. Slab is approximately 29 years old and is near the end of its expected life cycle. We then moved to Ice Lab piping testing and evaluation, and this was prepared by Fraser Valley Refrigeration. Hydraulic testing was performed on the slabs, testing both the Memorial Arena Ice Lab, the Dawson Creek Curling Club Ice Lab, and the brine line system at the Kin Arena was separately evaluated. In the Curling Rink, there's no appreciable issues. The Memorial Arena, the brine piping systems in both buildings can be maintained cost-effectively for the remaining lifecycle of the concrete slab. The Kin Arena, the overall header condition is fair, fair, and the overall brine system is fair. The refrigeration systems were then reviewed through TFM consultants. The Kin Arena, the expected life cycle for the refrigeration compressor in this application is 20 to 25 years old. The three compressors in the Kin Arena have been in operation since 1988. They're 21 years old and have reached the end of their life, although they're still functioning and they're still working. The Memorial Arena and Curling Rink, we now know the condition of both the chillers and it's recommended, and this is again from the consult, it's recommended the new chillers are purchased. We do not recommend re tubing, as there are no guarantees of its success. In addition, when the plant is looked at as a whole, including the chillers, condenser, compressors, pumps and electrical, it becomes evident the entire plant should be replaced. Purchasing a new chiller will not guarantee years of trouble-free service, as the condition of the critical equipment is poor and unreliable. To actualize the functionality, investments need to be made that are estimated to be slightly over $9 million. These investments could be phased over the six-year program. As a result of us now understanding the slabs that are reaching their end of life, but do require, and they are nearing their end of life, so they're going to need to be replaced, but they're still serviceable and functional. And so, from that perspective is how we've made this, arrived at the recommendation from administration of what we need to do initially and how we phase it over. The needs assessment confirms that two skating surfaces are required now and into the future and are recommended that they be on the same site. The needs assessment indicates that there were four sheets of curling ice required now and in the future, but that needs assessment identifies their currently unmet needs. The Curling Rink, converting that existing Curling Rink into a sport facility with half a Curling Rink of four sheets and half of something else is going to require significant engineering. It's going to require significant architectural investigation, and that has not been undertaken at this point. So that we come up with these alternatives in terms of what and how we could move forward in terms of the options that are presented for these, understanding now the conditions of the building, understanding the needs of our community for the growth and/or existing facility users, both ice and dry floor. And then you start to make those considerations in terms of what are the factors that you should be considering, and that's what council has undergone today. And so, there were four or five options in regards to that, and that's final recommendation that, and the conclusion that's been made today. The total timeline that's projected for this has the system start up by October 30. We understand the implications for our ice users when you say that, because traditionally, normally, they start in first couple of weeks of September, moving into October. And it could be problematic, but the issues of options are also exactly problematic as well, in terms of what you do and how you do it. If you use, and we continue with the existing resolution that's on the floor in front of council today, is that we're going to use the Encana Event Center for the 2015-16 ice season and continue this year as the investigative process. That's currently the resolution that council's operating on during. Encana Event Center for our ice users booked heavily in the month of October, so there's going to be implications if we use that option. So, the conclusion is that the existing downtown city ice facilities be renewed at a cost of slightly over $6 million, and we're moving forward with that. And so, from that perspective, I wanted to give a bit of an overview of what we've done, what we've taken into consideration, how we've reached today in terms of understanding some of that information and hopefully getting the right information to guide us to the decision that allows us to move forward, recognizing what, this is obvious today. It was obvious in the Hockeyville thing that went on in our community, the passion that exists in our community, the quality of life that those services, those facilities offer to all of us, and why and what we do in our community, and it touches many people. So, I wanted to give a bit of an overview of that, because in fairness to everyone, that's the high-level report that we're operating on. So from that, I'm going to close, and I want to throw it to council for discussion. Counselor Schuman, Counselor McFadden, Counselor Wilbur first.
All right. So first of all, I want to thank our staff and all of the consultants that they reached out to in order to get us all of this information in a timely fashion, so that we could look at it and make a decision in time to have some, some ice for next year. I feel like this is a no-brainer, that we have to do this. I feel that, you know, building a new facility to the tune of $50 or $60 million is not something that we can do at this time. Frankly, I'm afraid to build anything in this community with, you know, our past record. And the option of doing nothing, in my view, is also not a good option. So, I am in favor of this recommendation, and we'll see how the rest of council feels.
Thank you. Counselor McFadden?
Your worship, through you, I guess, to staff, the numbers we have here to, for the total fix is about a little over $9 million. My understanding is that's the engineer's assessment, and when this goes to tender, we could get a number back that reflects this or does not reflect it in any way. Is that, is that correct, Jim?
So, an estimate is just what it says it is. It's an estimate. You don't know the pricing until the market tells you what it's worth. That's what the RFP process is about.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Wilbur?
I just, I just wanted to break down, actually, kind of what the mayor said. That was a lot of information to take in, and so people know, this is the report we went through, 300 and some pages. So, I, exactly what Counselor Schuman said, thank you to staff for the effort they put in, because that was a lot of work. But I want to break it down to you, what we would be deferring and not doing this year in order to move this forward. We would not be upgrading the city hall phones. We would not do the centennial pool demolition. We would not finish the upgrades at the event center. We would not be able to do the fire training site. We would not do the city cemetery expansion, and we would not do the Kenbork Aquatic Center Northside parking lot or Crescentview Park. So those are the things that we would be deferring. And in our plan moving forward, some of the things that the mayor touched on, so in 2016, we would do the short-term building envelope and site upgrades. In 2017, the Curling Rink slab. In 2018, the medium-term building envelope and site upgrade. In 2019, Memorial Arena Ice Lab, and in 2020, the Kin Arena Ice Lab. And I just wanted to put that out there, because it kind of breaks down for you what our plan is, is in this recommendation and what's been brought forward. So, it's not a quick fix, but at least it is a plan and it has an attainable goal. So I just wanted to put that out there.
Thank you. Counselor Rogers?
I don't think we're in this big of a rush. I think we need to make a very informal decision. Having 48 hours to read a report and make a decision on that report is, I think, not prudent to be making, you know, it's a $9 million decision over, over five, six years. I, I, I know that we have the, ice is already available. We worked that out back in January, when we decided to get the report and study and everything done on the building. I think that if we're going to make a decision, it should be a little bit more educated, because there might be some different opinions out there, and that there might be some other things that will come in from the community. And that's the main thing that, about doing this right now, is how much do the citizens of Dawson Creek know what is going on here, what we're planning on doing? I, I think that we should be able to at least hear from the citizens, what they want to do, what they're spending their money on, what we're spending their money on. In the report, and I'll quote it, it's, it did say, "It's reasonable to assume that the city will not be able to afford recreation and cultural services at the current level." And I, I do believe that the, the recreation and cultural services that we provide are not sustainable at this, at this point. Just a review of the money is, it's $8.7 million that the city contributes to the recreational and cultural services. Protective services is $7.9 million. So, we're saying to the, I guess the citizens are saying, and council is saying, that we're spending over a million dollars more on recreation and cultural services than we do on protective services and transportation and water and sewer. Parts of the things that, that, that the city should be looking at mostly, and the most important services for me, would be why we incorporated in the beginning was so that we could collect the tax base for protective services, for transportation, for water, for sewer. Those, to me, are the important things. The cultural and recreational, yes, that is important. That's evident here today. But the amount of money that we're spending on those, those items, I believe, is, in my opinion, it's a little bit expensive, and it's not sustainable. There was also a quote from one of our council meetings when we were deciding to go through the whole part. It's, it was, "The eventual decision reached by council will clearly define how serious council is about the fiscal gap." So we are dealing with the fiscal gap. And I know we've done some things to, to address that. There's a lot of uncertainty where this money is going to be coming from. I can see that it's from the Crescentview Park. You're taking the Crescentview Park off, but we're not saying to the citizens, "Okay, you people that have moved around the Crescentview Park, that anticipated the development of that park, they might not be skaters or curlers, but they might want to be able to utilize that park." So that might have been one of the decisions for them to, to buy a property around that park or even move to this town. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that we haven't heard from the citizens regarding some of the items that we're, that we're talking about cutting or suspending. And, and, you know, what are we going to do next year? Next year, we'll have another $1.4 million that we're going to have to put into, into the facility again. Where is that money coming from? We've done our 2015 budget, so, sorry, our five-year plan when we were doing the 2015 budget, so I didn't see anything in that for this. So I'd go, and where's this money going to be coming from? And then, we do have the uncertainty of the fair share. What if we end up getting cut back on the fair share funds, and now we lose another, another couple million out of the fair share funds? Where is, what are we going to do to make up that money? What services are we going to cut at that point, and what infrastructure projects are we going to, are we going to suspend? You know, you could say, okay, well, we're not going to, we're not going to pave a road, but we'll just keep filling in the potholes. Well, that road's going to deteriorate, and then it's going to end up costing twice as much. So there's a lot of things that we should be looking at. Mainly, where is the money coming from, and is this really going to be sustainable? I, I know that we're going to be going through, talking about what's important to the community, and I believe the arenas are important to the community, but, but we're not thinking about all of the citizens. We're thinking about 1,100 ice users, 250 curlers, I guess, anyways. But there was over 500 people that could use an indoor facility for soccer or gymnastics. We haven't talked about those people and what their needs are. So there's a lot of citizens out there that aren't directly, some aren't even interested in the ice, and they probably look at it and go, "Well, we're, the, the city is spending $650, we're subsidizing $650 for every ice user." You know, what are we, what are we, what are we subsidizing for the seniors? How many seniors are using that facility? You know, you got to, I just look at, you got, you got to think about everybody, not just a selective group. And we got to think about where the money is coming from. And we, and further to that, we have to, we have to be responsible for what we're spending the money on. I can, I could see, I just, I don't want to be part of a project where we haven't looked at everything. You know, we're making a, we're deciding over the last 48 hours from getting a report, we're going to spend $9 million of the citizens' dollars. I think we've just got to slow it down a little bit. If the, if the ice users get delayed by a month or something like that, I think at least we've done the responsible thing, and we've taken a hard look at it, and we've gotten feedback from the citizens.
Thank you. Thank you. Counselor Jevetkoff, then Counselor Wilbur?
My sense is that there's enough votes on here that are going to approve this, but I think Mark has some good points. Now, I, I support the idea of getting the thing into service. I've got a bit of a problem with sort of coming down at the 11th hour and saying that we have to approve it today, otherwise we won't have ice for this winter. That, to me, is a bit of a problem, but I guess where that comes in is, is the cost-effectiveness aspect. Like, you know, we've had a, an ammonia system in there for the last, since there was ice in there, and it hasn't been a problem. And in the interest of due diligence, like we're expected as elected officials to, you know, exert our own due diligence as well. I've talked to a number of people that are experienced, have worked in the industry for quite a long time, and they tell me that ammonia is the most efficient as far as refrigeration, and I think that's expressed in the report. And ammonia is contained in the room, in the mechanical room. So, a leak isn't going to jeopardize people out in the grandstands or, because the only ammonia out there is mixed into the brine, which is a very minimal amount. So, you know, again, it's, it's what we've been using for years and years, and to change the Freon means that we have to replace the whole system. If we replaced the existing equipment with the same equipment, because DoCal, the supplier of the chillers, are still in business, they have the serial numbers of the equipment that they provided, you can replace that, my understanding is probably for a third of the price. So, you know, we'd be looking at $500,000 or $600,000 to get the ice back in business as compared to the, you know, $2 million or $2.2 million. So I guess that's one issue, although to me, it's not a showstopper. I mean, I'm not going to go to great lengths to argue with the four supporting votes. But I guess what, I wanted to make the point, and I guess the other thing is the, the concrete slabs. I don't think we have enough information to start planning to replace them. The indication from BST is that they have measured the floor, the deflection, against the original baseline on both the Kin and the Memorial, and the floors haven't moved. So that indicates to me that they may be solid enough to last for many years. I mean, my understanding of concrete is it, it hardens as it ages, and if you have a good base, you know, there shouldn't be an issue with it moving. So to replace the floors, and the floors are, you know, $6 million of this budget. The Curling Rink doesn't have a baseline yet. I think it would be prudent to do a baseline survey this year, and then to monitor, monitor it next year to see if there is any movement. So, I would like to propose an amendment to the motion that we don't commit the money right now for the, for the floors, for the concrete slabs, but we set up a monitoring system or a process so that we can gain more information on it before we commit to that expenditure. So if we get a second or for that motion, then I'll speak to it a bit more.
Okay, so thank you. So, second to Counselor Rogers, so the amendment is that we're going to amend the, the original motion that we won't replace the concrete until such time as we have some baseline information available before a decision is made to replace.
To prove that it is a problem.
Thank you.
So that would mean that we approve this year's expenditure of the 2.4 and get the ice back in, and then the, the concrete slabs, we would look at them, you know, do the monitoring and get more information on them.
Thank you. Jim, first?
Perhaps wording for that resolution would be that any future expenditure on the building has to be approved in the year it's proposed on the basis of a business case given to you, because I don't know why you would segregate the concrete floors when you might feel the same about, say, the site works that are proposed or the building envelope stuff. And it would be our intention as staff to bring you each year in the budget, the business case for each expenditure anyway, so capturing that in a motion, you know, makes sense.
Council's going to make that approval, and so, go, yeah, go ahead.
So, just further on that, then, like, whatever way it works, I'd like to see a monitoring process set up, so we can get more information on the condition of the slabs before we're convinced that they need to be replaced.
Sure. Counselor Rogers, then Counselor Parsl.
In the Fraser Valley Refrigeration report here, it does say, "The Memorial Arena subfloor does have issues, but these, but these can be overcome. We believe that the, that both floors can be maintained cost-effectively for another lifecycle of mechanical equipment, 15 to 20 years." So, is that telling us that those floors are good for another 15 to 20 years? And if it's not broken, don't fix it. If, if it becomes to a point where it leaks or something like that, then let's at least have a contingency for it if we decide for the, I think it's 2016 that we were going to do the other floor.
17.
17.
Thank you, sir.
Put the money away, and if it does, if it does finally break down, like, maybe we can get a couple more years out of it. So when it does break down, at least the money's put away.
And I think that's what Jim's point is, that he will prepare the business case for demonstrating that the expenditure is required, and that information is brought back to council for that decision under our five-year capital plan.
Right.
Counselor Parsl, then Counselor Wilbur?
This amendment, I mean, I'm not going to vote against it, but in fairness, I think it's my, was always my understanding that the recommendation, just like we do for a five-year plan, that this stuff would be flowing back to us for decision, at different decision points anyway. But if it makes my colleague over there more comfortable, I'd be supporting the amendment.
And, and the administration are going to be bringing back the RFP.
That's right.
For this first piece of work as well. So it's, what we're giving is the approval to go out for the RFP, and then once that comes back, then the final approval for council to proceed is done at that point, so.
Just to speak further to that point. So, inherent in this recommendation is, as staff said, these are estimates. They'll go out for requests for proposals, we'll get it all in, and we'll look at the situation then, and the justification for it. And the justification for it, for the monitoring, after the result of the monitoring will be sufficient for us to make decisions. But what Counselor Rogers said is also, I think, inherent in this, that we are sort of saying to the community and to staff, if we pass this master recommendation, that we are committing, prepared to commit these funds. And it will be at a price to other projects, to the whole other issues that we're dealing with. But for me, you know, I'm a fiscal conservative, for sure, but I can't conceive this town without curling, hockey, figure stating. And so, as Counselor Schuman said, this in part is a no-brainer. So this amendment, if it satisfies, you know, just puts it, makes it clear for people, will be helpful. I have some questions to ask later about the recommendation, but I will support this amendment.
Thank you. Counselor Wilber?
I was going to say, Counselar Parsl kind of alluded to what my line of thinking. And I, too, if that would make Counselor Jevetkov feel better, then I will support that amendment. But I just, something that also Counselor Rogers had said, you know, this wasn't a 48-hour process, it was a five-month process. And we've been involved in it all along and been reported to and spoke to the public. And that was why I made the point of reading out what we would have to defer. Because reality is, there's not a money tree. There's one taxpayer, and we're using their money. But as Counselor Schuman and Counselar Parsl have said, this community is hockey and skating and curling and arts and culture. It's a part of who we are, and we have to support that. And I command staff for finding a way for us to do this and have ice this year for our users and do it without us having to go out or borrow money, that they found a way for us to accomplish this. So thank you, staff, and I, with the amendment, will support that motion.
Thank you. Counselar Parsl, you had follow-up?
No, I think we need to vote, proceed to, we vote on the amendment, but then I'd like to speak to the recommendation as it's amended.
Thank you. Tyra?
So are you guys happy with the, that wording change that it'll be brought back through a business case for the purposes of those slabs?
The only, I'd like to be assured that we will have a process to monitor those slabs. So we have a baseline on both the Ken and the Memorial, my understanding from the report.
We actually have baselines on all three now. The, this was put together so quickly that the survey on Ken wasn't included, but it was done.
So is it an actual survey that can be redone accurately?
It's elevations at known spots.
At known spots?
Yeah.
Okay. So if we have those baselines, then the assurance that it's going to be monitored that way?
Yeah, the deflections and everything are based on the surveys then, so, yeah.
Yeah, so the monitoring aspect can be rolled into the resolution because the actual intention is when the ice comes out, I'm not second guessing counsel's decision, but if the decision was that there will be ice in those facilities
And then when the ice comes out?
When it comes out in the spring, there'd be a new monitor assessment to see if anything has changed. And that would be used to inform your decision about the capital budget for 2016. That was a recommendation from Fraser Valley that we do that?
Yeah, it's probably, it would have to be done a couple times because it's frozen initially when the ice comes out. And then it thaws by fall, and there could be some deflection.
Well, of course, in the Memorial, it thaws right away because it has subfloor heating.
Yeah.
Thank you. Counselor, so are we, are you good on the amendment? Any further questions, comments? You ready for the question? All in favor of the amendment? Opposed? It's carried. Thank you. And the main motion, Counselar Parsl?
Okay, I'd like to speak to the motion as amended here. There's, I think there's, we need to talk a little more about Freon and ammonia. My, we heard from Counsel Jevetkov about the cost and the equipment and so on. But I'd like for staff to review again why their recommendation was for Freon. I mean, there's some good reasons there, but I think they should be voiced at this meeting.
Thank you. Jim?
Well, through your worship, the recommendation from the consultants is for Freon, and it is based on a number of factors. One is safety, safety not just for the public, but also for the employees who might be in that plant room. Operational costs over the life cycle. The Freon operates at a lower horsepower and doesn't require power engineers. And it doesn't require 24/7 monitoring. So your current situation is you require power engineers and you require them 24/7 during the operation of the plant. So there's a savings there. There is less maintenance, there's less routine maintenance. In a Freon system, the systems are just much simpler. And the maintenance around them doesn't involve balancing brine and the kind of things that there's been a bit of a whoopsie in regarding the ammonia systems. And they last longer for those reasons. So that's the reasons the consultants gave. And I am not pretending to be an expert in these systems. I'm going with the recommendation from the consultants.
Thank you. Counselar Parsl?
Okay, just one last comment. I thought the, here I guess I'm challenging Counselor Jevetkov about something here. I think Counselor Jevetkov said the ammonia was contained in the room. I thought that the reason why we had to close the ice this year was there was ammonia in the brine, and that triggered the closure. Am I wrong or correct, staff?
So the reason for the closure was exactly that ammonia leaked. And it spread outside the plant room because it mixed in with the brine. The, as you see in the report, ammonia has some great things about it, including the efficiency of its heating and cooling. Not so nice is that it is a deadly toxin. If a human encounters it, you're going to either die or you're going to have the kind of problems that Takeare Magnusson has because she was perfectly contaminated. But more than that, it is one of the smallest molecular structures on the planet, which means it's really hard to contain. It is so small, it finds its way out. And lastly, it's what they call a hydrofoul, which means it seeks water. So for all of those reasons, if you were to Google "arena closed ammonia leak" in Canada this year, you're going to find 40 or 50 cases of that in Canada. It's a reason why at one time 90% of recreational ice surfaces were ammonia and 10% were natural ice. And now Freon is about 25% of that market increases every year.
Thank you. Does that answer your question, Counselar Parsl?
It was just, I thought it should be voiced.
Thank you.
So my last comment here is I have a problem with the deferred capital items. Only in one sense, and again, through you to staff, my understanding is that with the proposal here, some of the, there will be energy efficiencies through some of the changes that will be made. And so why wasn't the carbon fund considered to fund some of these energy efficiencies associated with this change? The reason I say that is that, and I'm sure every council member may have a slightly different perspective here, but I look at the list of things that are proposed to be deferred to enable us to have funding for this project. Counselor Rogers has made comment about the Crescent View Park. That was one of my, oh, that one, I don't like the idea of that. And the other one, through personal observation, there's a real necessity for, I think, as for blacktopping the north side of the parking lot associated with the Ken Barrow Aquatic Center for major events, just for the ongoing logistics associated with fairgrounds, but also with the Incanor Event Center. So I would like to propose that we make an amendment to the motion, amended motion right now, that we have at a future council meeting a discussion about the application of the carbon tax so that one of these deferred items could be reinstated.
So you're making that by way of an amendment to the motion? Or do you want to bring it back as a separate item? What's, can I ask for purpose of process for our five-year capital plan? That's going to be approved today. We have to identify those funding sources for this potential project. And what's the implications to that amendment?
So it would be hopeful that you do that so as to avoid the need for later revision. You can, of course, the actual capital projects are a schedule. They are not part of your actual bylaw.
Okay.
The gross totals are part of your bylaw, so it could be changed at a point in the future. So to answer the first question about why the carbon fund wasn't included, it's because I don't have market pricing yet on these elements. And the project in total doesn't qualify under your current carbon fund guidelines, but elements of it do. So for instance, the compressor upgrade certainly does, the electrical, the control systems. These are items that would, as you saw in the report from the energy manager, they not only qualify under your carbon fund, but they could make you eligible for, make you eligible for BC Hydro incentives. So would there be enough money in the carbon fund proposals for this year that if you deferred them, you could do one or more of those projects? The answer is yes. In fact, you could do both projects. The Counselar Parsl has referenced with, by deferring projects that are contemplated in the carbon fund this year. And those projects are all around LED lighting. So they're LED lighting primarily in the three components of the multiplex. And that work could be deferred for a year if that is your preference. Where you might get an issue that you will not know for some time is if the RFP comes back with unit pricing, that the components qualifying under your current carbon fund criteria don't add up to the amount of money that would be needed for Crescent View Park and for the parking lot at Ken Barrow Aquatic Center, you might have to waive your carbon fund policy. On the other hand, to Counselar Parsl's point, the carbon fund retrofits for LED lighting are, although they are identified in the stuff you've presented to the public so far, they are not mission critical to the use of those facilities. They are meant towards saving energy. Crescent View Park and the parking lot upgrades at Ken Barrow Aquatic Center are things that were promised to the citizens and would now be taken away in favor of the arena. So if you wanted to make that change, you could do it today, and staff will make that work for you.
So, but the other piece of that is we are going to have to approve the, once the RFP comes back from the pricing, we're going to, at that time, have to approve the project based on the funding at that time. Could we then validate the funding sources under our capital budget and then identify those other projects through the carbon if we so choose? Or is it, is it better to do it today?
Yeah, through your worship, I'd prefer it be done today.
Okay.
And then the budget funding can be set. If there is a variance from what is set, you will be notified that we need to change something up. But if you set it today, it's better direction going forward.
All right, so does that motion that Counselar Parsl, the amendment to the motion, then, does that work?
Look, there's sufficient funds in the carbon fund to make both of those projects happen. And what you will be deferring is LED lighting in the three components of the multiplex.
Okay, thank you. So by way of amendment, Counselar Parsl?
Whatever is appropriate.
Thank you. Moved, seconded, Counselor Jevetkov. Discussion on the amendment? Counselor Rogers?
If we're going to be moving a few things around, is there, can I get a list of everything else? Because there might be something else that I want to maybe switch or take out. Yeah, but what about the ones that aren't on the list?
Those were already approved.
Those are already in the capital budget, capital, five-year capital plan?
Okay.
And this process went through was to identify the funding sources for that $2.4 and those projects? So it's a prioritization process, right?
So there's nothing else we can pick?
Well, the capital, that's a separate discussion under your capital that you've already done, right? All right. Any further questions on the amendment? You ready for the question? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Any further discussion on the main motion? Counselor Jevetkov?
Freon. There is a case to be made for ammonia. A lot of these issues that are coming up, they are replacing their equipment with the same equipment. They're still going to use ammonia. Ammonia is more efficient, less greenhouse gas emissions. So there's a case. And ammonia is contained in that mechanical room. So the ammonia that goes out into the cement floor is very minimal because it's mixed into the brine. So I don't think that's a huge danger. It's the ammonia in that room, that's where it's contained. But that's irrelevant. I'm not going to argue about that. I just wanted to bring it up that there is a case to be made for it. I guess the other concern that I've heard while I'm doing my diligence is,
Here for judiciary duties.
Yeah. Is the compressors.
I'm going to get tired of you saying, using that word, Paul.
My understanding, and this was mentioned at the crowdsourcing meeting, that screw compressors for this application are not as efficient as reciprocal compressors. Now, I don't know if you heard that, but it was brought up at the crowdsourcing meeting. My understanding that screw compressors operate most efficiently when they are, used continually, when they're on continually. And reciprocal compressors operate, they function for when you're stopping and starting. So with this process, you're, as the, you know, the floor warms up, the compressor kicks in. As it cools, the compressor stops. So I guess my question is, can we include in the request for proposals something to the effect that we would like the existing compressor, like an investigation into the reuse of the existing compressors? Now, talking to the compressor people, the compressors, the housing doesn't wear out. It's the moving parts inside, so the crankshaft, the pistons, the rings, that type of thing. So it's possible that these compressors could be rebuilt to the tune of maybe $3,000 or $4,000 each instead of purchasing new. So that could be a significant cost savings if it's possible to include that in the process. Now, I think the electrical, the controls, I think, would have to be upgraded to get the efficiency, the energy efficiency. But the compressors themselves, my understanding is that, you know, you could rebuild them and they'd last for another 25 years.
Okay.
Just regarding the Freon, what does that do to our climate action part? Because I know that there's no, our Freon is not allowed in refrigerators. So what does that do if we go to a Freon system? Like, is there going to be, is there going to be a cost to the city from going to a Freon system through the carbon?
Yeah, so that was covered in the report you were giving.
Yeah, yeah. What is it?
1.6% increase per chug.
Also, Counselor Wilber said that we've been doing this for five months. Yes, we have been doing this for five months. I've been down to the arena and if any chance staff was walking by, say, okay, well, what's going on? Let me get, let me get some information, everything. But that's all just getting bits and pieces. We didn't actually have any hard data until the other day. And this is what I would like to go by, rather than suggestions being made that, oh, it might be this, it might be that. Because we did get a lot of it, it might be this, it might be that. Because we first started this out, it all might just be $3 million bucks. Now we're $9 million bucks. So my concern, I can't express it enough, I guess. We still really don't know what the actual numbers are until it goes out for our RFP. Okay, after it goes out for our RFP, what if the numbers come back higher than the $2.4 million? What do we do at that point? What I've done, what I've done this before on other projects personally, I've bid a job and then it'll get re-tendered again for cost savings. Do we have the option of re-tendering this project for cost savings?
What we're saying is we're going to an RFP. What we're saying is we're going to an RFP process for the envelope of replacing the mechanical systems in those three systems, and I put the criteria around that, moving it out to an RFP. Once that RFP comes back, you have your prices, the market determines what it's going to be. It will tell you whether it's $1 million, $2 million, $8 million. At that time, council then, as the board, endorses and says, yes, we're accepting that? Or no, we can't accept that because of this? We need these options or whatever. But, oh, we're at this stage today as saying, here's the conditions in which we need to move forward for the RFP process to move it forward. So, I don't think we're approving anything in a financial aspect today because we don't know what that is.
Yeah. I'd like, I just want to make sure that once these numbers come in, that we do have the option of centering it out to get re-tendered again.
That's what, and I believe that's... That's what council will do once we get that done.
So, what if the numbers come in after it goes out for re-tendering and it's still more than what we're budgeting? Um, are we going to carry on and just fix it anyways?
No, council gets to make that decision at that time, right?
Yeah. Exactly the same as you will on paving or any of the other things that are in your capital budget.
Yeah. Okay. Councilor Jevatkov?
Um, just talking about the request for proposals there. In my previous life with the government, with the other government, um, we had a, in the financial policy, there was a, a tender process where you got a bid. There was also a request for proposal process where you could select the proposal that you're going to work with, and then you still had, there was provisions there to negotiate within that. Like, say that, say the, uh, cost came up above what you had anticipated, you could negotiate certain items out of it. Is that a, a process that we use in the city?
Jim?
Uh, yes, your worship. So, the recommendation is that you go to an RFP for design, build, supply, and install. Um, the criteria for that will be best value, and once a best value proponent is chosen, council, the RFPs give council the right to negotiate within that. Uh, so, um, that would be your process. That's assuming that, uh, a bid comes in at a price that you can accommodate. Um, in terms of the earlier comment by Councilor Jevatkov, the advice of our consultants is that reciprocating compressors can't work with the Freon, uh, the, and that the screw, um, type compressor is the only alternative. So, I don't believe that there is an option to tender, uh, for, um, for the reciprocating.
But as the RFP process goes through and you get those proposals, then they can tell us absolutely if that's a, uh, opportunity or not, I guess. Councilor Parswell?
This is my, my last, my last comment. I think we have all the checks and balances in place. Uh, council will be engaged at appropriate times, uh, in, in the appropriate decisions, and, uh, I, I empathize with a lot of what Councilor Rogers said, but, uh, as I've made my decision to support this endeavor, um, I've said some things about the three sports, and I just can't see the community operating without them. I, um, I see this actually as good news. And when we started this project, I thought, boy, if you listen to some of the comments that are made about the state of the buildings, that we might be having to build new facilities at who knows what price. So, when I learned that for a $9 million investment over six years, uh, we can have 25 years of, uh, of ice time here, I thought, gee, that's, that to me is, uh, better than the alternative. So I, I'm quite pleased that the buildings came in with pretty good report cut, and that, uh, it will take some work, obviously, to find the money for this, but, uh, that's just, that's just life. We all have unexpected bills and we have to rehone our finances. So, I, I'm, I'm also encouraged by what I've learned from three people I've talked to who belong to the curling club, and I look forward to a reinvigorated curling club, and I really appreciated the presentation at the budget meeting. A very good argument for why eight sheets rather than four, and this will be the case with this proposal. So, uh, good luck to the curling club, and I hope to see, uh, everyone sort of moving forward under some good leadership. Thank you.
Thank you. Further comments, further questions?
Question?
For, uh, I'm going to wrap up. Thank you for the question. And, um, I think for us, we hope, um, through this process to do, we have the accountabilities. This board that you elect has the accountabilities, um, to represent the citizens of our community. To me, that's about always our financial accountabilities first and foremost in terms of making the best possible decisions that we can. You make that with the information that you gather, um, and I hope, hopefully, the residents in the community, um, take that we've done, um, we've lived up to that fiduciary duties we have to best represent our community and citizens about what your accountabilities that you place on us to make those decisions on your behalf. Um, and that financial decision you've heard today is a significant one for us. But, uh, the, the comment I want to really close with that, and hopefully you've heard it, is our capital budget process is a five-year capital budget process with each year planning the capital and infrastructure and work that goes on in our community. So what we've done today is reprioritized some of those projects to say to the community, these facilities are important to us, and we need to ensure that we move forward with them. And unfortunately, that means moving some other projects off of the, the, the list of our capital budget for this year into future years. The component around providing reliability, um, for these facilities to me is probably the one that is the most important to me, and we've talked about the, uh, the, uh, Freon versus ammonia and the different components around that, and what we do with the, um, mechanical systems and the buildings. But I think we need to demonstrate that we're trying to accomplish reliability in the services for the users, that they can feel confident that when they pay their registration fees to go curling or speed skating or playing hockey, that they're going to have the use of those facilities this year, next year, and in 20 years down the road. And so to me, that's the, uh, such an important component of what we are trying to accomplish in this process. And so I, I just want to close with that, that we really appreciate the passion that's demonstrated by our community and understanding that for all of us, this is a, is a significant and important decision, along with all the other things that are going on today, final budget day and fair share discussions and all of those things that are so critical to our community. We really appreciate the, uh, respectfulness and the, um, interaction that people have given to, certainly to me and to, I think, council, and trying to gather the information to make the best decision on your behalf. Questions been called, Councilor Jevatkov?
Uh...
You know how fast I'm going to go, right?
You know, I want to say the last. I was just, uh, wanted, uh, your comment about crowdsourcing. We did start a process there, and, uh, I know there are people out there that expect further involvement, so maybe you could just touch on that.
And I absolutely make the personal commitment to those individuals. We absolutely want to recognize and appreciate and value the input and the engagement that they gave to us, and I will follow up with them because we got the names of eight of them that said they wanted to be involved, and we will follow up with them and ensure that we engage them in the follow-up conversations, and I'll take that on personally. Jim?
Uh, so, if that concludes, um, the, where, where the resolution is going to be?
Yeah.
Uh, I think you should also add that you're rescinding three things that are now, um, uh, not accurate, accurate. Um, previously, you had resolved that if, um, repairing the curling rig costs more than $120,000, you weren't going to do it. Well, it is going to cost more than $120,000, and you're still going to do it. Um, you had said that you would, um, operate ice at Encana Event Center. Uh, now you're saying you're not. Um, and you had said you would operate the Memorial Arena as a dry floor for the coming ice season, and you're not. So, you could rescind those three things as part of this motion, that would be...
Sure.
Clean.
Do you want them ahead of, or can we do them?
We should just be, uh, you should, you should amend the motion to say we're rescinding the following three, and then we're doing this.
So the report number 15001 from administration dated January 5th, 2015 encapsulated those three, uh, motions, and I need then, Councilor Schuman, Parswell, uh, question, all, any questions? All in favor? Opposed? It's carried. You ready for the question? This question has been called on the original motion. All those in favor? Opposed? It's carried. Um, thank you. Next item of business, mayor's business. Um, I have, uh, that's enough for today. Media question period. Johnny, yes?
Was any phase of it covered by insurance?
No. There's some components perhaps from some of the other, uh, users that may have some components in there, but not specifically for the city.
Yes, through your worship, uh, we made a stab at that, and, uh, the insurance company had pretty much the same information we do, that these systems were at the end of life, and so actually insurance doesn't replace systems that were at the end of life. The curling club had a claim out for lost, uh, business, uh, but as you know, all of our recreational facilities lose money every day they operate, so actually, it's a financial benefit to us when they're closed, so we couldn't claim that.
Thank you. Any further questions? Johnny, anything?
I'm done.
Natalie?
I'll speak with the afterers.
No, I'm done.
Yeah.
No, I'm too. Uh, anything further from media questions? Anybody? Thank you, everyone. Motion to adjourn. Councilors Wilber, Councilor McFadden, all in favor? Opposed? Carried. Ladies and gentlemen, everyone that come, uh, gave some time to us this afternoon, thank you. We appreciate your interest.
Thank you.
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 Thank you.